All right, we'll have our call to order for the Borough Council Regular Meeting for May fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
President Ferguson.
Here.
Vice President Gerard.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Fagan.
Here.
Councilmember Cresser.
Here.
Mayor Gerard.
Here.
Junior Councilperson Leader.
Here.
Borough Manager Snyder.
Here.
Borough Solicitor Harper.
Here.
All right, if everyone can stand, we'll do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the required from which it stands for the creation of the Ohio. Through this world, we're delivering justice.
Mr. Vice President, will you do the invocation?
As we gather here today, let us pause and center ourselves. Regardless of our device, diverse backgrounds and beliefs, we come together with a shared purpose to collaborate, to learn and grow for the good of our community. Let us invoke the spirit of unity, compassion, and understanding. May our hearts be open to new ideas and may our words be guided by respect and kindness. In this meeting, let us seek wisdom, creativity, and solutions that benefit benefit us all. May our discussions be fruitful and our actions purposeful. And so we begin, let our intentions be pure, our minds focused, and our hearts connected. Amen.
All right, welcome, everyone. We'll start with our agenda. Item one, approval of the meeting agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the May fifteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting?
Simo.
Second.
I got a motion from Councilwoman Cresser, a second from Councilwoman Gerard. Any changes or amendments? If there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. All right, item two, approval of the meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the April third, twenty twenty four workshop and the April seventeenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting? I get a motion from Councilwoman Burns, a second from Councilwoman Cresser. Any questions, changes, or amendments? If there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. All right, item three, public input. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, we'd ask you to stand at the podium, make sure the microphone's on, and name or state your name and address and your reason for addressing council. And we know Mr. Larry's not going to speak, so. But you never know, so. It's good to see you, my friend. All right, if there are nobody that wants to speak, we'll go to item four announcements.
Next council meeting is June nineteenth. That's the workshop regular meeting at seven P M. Here in council chambers. The Planning Commission is scheduled to meet on Monday, May twentieth, at six P M. In council chambers. Hurrock is scheduled to meet Wednesday, May twenty second, at eight A M. In council chambers. The Hatfield Borough Offices will be closed on Monday, May twenty seventh, in the observance of the Memorial Day holiday. The Hatfield Museum Historical Society is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, May twenty eighth, at seven P M. Here in council chambers. And Founder's Day is scheduled for Saturday, June fifteenth, from twelve P M. To four P M. In Centennial Park.
All right, any questions? Are we squared away from Memorial Day?
Yes, for Memorial Day, if anyone is participating in the parade, please arrive at Memorial Park at eight A M. There will be a borough vehicle with candy that we'll be tossing out. I did ask the Legion if they want any elected officials to participate in either the ceremony at Memorial Park or the ceremony at the Legion that I needed to know by this Friday, so I could give everybody ample notice to prepare something.
I know we'll all be there, and the girls are looking to walk in, at least my youngest is. And hopefully we won't run out of candy this time. Did we run out of candy? We'd have too much last time.
I think we ran out.
Okay.
I really hope we don't run out this time. There's a lot.
Is there?
But everyone who attends should be very happy that they've received candy.
All right, all right.
Careful about coughful at the end there.
That's true. Yeah, you feel like everyone in coughful gets shafted, right? They get all the little flags no one else wanted, stickers. All right, if there's no question on announcements, we'll go to item five, new business. Item A, ordinance number five fifty-three, amending the Hatfield Borough Ordinance relating to the defined contribution plan for the revised Borough contributions.
Are we up there?
We'll give you a second. So, yes.
We just talked about she's going to do.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Madam Solicitor.
Okay, so under state law, the the Borough has an obligation to periodically look at and update its defined benefit pension plan requirements if necessary, to keep everything solvent, keep everybody happy, really. So they've recommended an ordinance change that would increase the Borough's contribution rate. And Jamie tells me it's in the budget anyway, so that's part of it. So we have to actually pass an ordinance. And Jamie's suggestion, and I looked it up, and there doesn't seem to be any reason why we can't. Putting in this ordinance that future changes could be made by resolution. It'll save you the advertising costs, because I do have to advertise this. So it's in your packet. All it does is raise the Borough's contribution. These are, well, I was gonna say non-uniform, but we don't actually have uniformed employees, but these are the, basically, the office staff people. People aren't subject to the union contract that we have in Public Works, okay? So they're getting an increase in what the Borough's contributing to whatever they have. And later on this evening, it's on the agenda to be advertised. And we'll advertise it for the only meeting we're having in June, which is the June nineteenth meeting. It'll be retroactive to January one.
So. Do we have some, like, a dollar amount of the impact to the budget expense or the pension expense that will? Just just a ballpark figure, I was just wondering.
Sure, I can get the numbers to you from Diane. We've currently been doing this since January first, so this is kind of retroactive as they need it for their audit. So I can let you know what the difference is. It's based on, obviously, it's a percentage of your salary. So it would be different when everyone would get a raise from last year to this year, and then their percentage. Correct.
I was just wondering what the dollar impact was. You're one of them. And I guess this is comparable to other municipalities in the area. This would be probably the same.
Um, yeah, I I don't know the answer to that question. The union contract went from three percent to four percent. So we normally just mirror the union contract. And then the seven percent for me was negotiated when I negotiated my employment agreement with Budget Finance.
I was just.
Yeah, I can certainly look and see what everybody else gets. I know that defined benefits and defined contribution plans are going to the wayside, and more municipalities are encouraging four fifty-seven plans, which you would put in for yourself. We offer that for our employees, too, and or I know other managers get a lump sum just put in, like, maybe they get five thousand dollars a year put towards their retirement outside of, instead of having, like, a defined contribution.
A four fifty-seven is just like a four oh one K.
Yeah, I forget. It just has a different number for government.
We've always, and our our plans have always been pretty solvent in the past, so, yeah, we've never really had any issues. I know some municipalities, places have issues with solvency, but we've never had it, at least as long as I've.
Well, we shifted from defined benefit to defined contribution some years ago for, you know, the office staff, and that actually makes it a lot easier to handle for both of both sides.
Yeah, I think when we've talked in the past, our defined benefit plan is, like, over eighty percent funded.
Right.
Which is phenomenal for government.
Very good for government.
And then employees that started after June, no, July first of two thousand twelve, do not get the defined benefit plan. They only get the defined contribution plan, plus the four fifty-seven. And or Teamsters Retirement, some of the the union workers get an additional Teamsters Retirement.
Thank you. You guys probably remember this. You get notified by the state what your minimum municipal obligation is for your defined benefit plan, and then you put it in. So.
So does that mean we're legally required to make this change?
We're not legally required to make this change since it's defined contribution, but it was. It is something that you probably do want to give to your employees.
I understand.
To keep them competitive with everybody else, particularly since, as as the Public Works Director even said last time, it's hard to find people.
Sure.
So.
And you're saying that the this ordinance would allow it to be changed in the future without advertising?
Yes, by resolution.
Okay. Do you think that's? I don't know. When it comes to, like, a public funds, perhaps it's something that may be should be advertised. I don't know. I don't know how the rest of council feels about that, but I do feel like something that changes.
Trying to slide something in there, and when you're talking money, you know.
I'm just trying to save your money on advertising.
We probably want to discuss that a little bit more.
Or I just have the public notified that it's happening.
Well, it has to happen in a public meeting on the agenda, so it's not like you're doing it in secret, but if you want to take the advertising out, we can we can change that. Somebody just has to tell me, you know.
I have personally said it should be advertised.
Why you get it advertised correctly. You think it should be advertised.
I think going forward, if we make changes, they should be advertised. That's what I think.
Well, we have time tonight, and let's talk about it tonight, right? Because the next meeting will be, you know.
Yeah, it'll be the meeting.
The meeting, so.
So that's a fair question.
I mean, that would just be leaving it the way it is currently.
Correct. Right now, it currently is an ordinance, so anytime you amend or revise an ordinance, you have to do it with another ordinance.
Right.
We've done this with a couple other things, just to avoid the cost of advertising them. And when I was asked about it, I wasn't sure this was legal, but I looked it up, and the statewide pension law does provide, you know, for your pension, whether you do it by ordinance or resolution or contract or something else. So I thought, okay, we can do it, but you don't have to.
Right.
And the cost of advertising, I don't remember. Do you remember, Jamie? It's probably several hundred dollars. I do a summary ad, it's cheaper, you know, and I would do a summary ad. Meaning sometimes we print the whole ordinance. I do that in zoning cases. Because if someone's going to take an appeal, I want to be able to say, hey, I did it right, you know? You can do a summary ad, and then if somebody takes an appeal, they're going to say, well, it wasn't clear to me that you were doing this, okay? But I think that's a very small risk on this type of thing. So I'll do a summary ad. It's not that expensive. And we have to do it for this one anyway.
Right.
And that's what you're talking about. Do you want to spend them time and money to do legal advertising for an ordinance? Or do you want to save that money and just do it by resolution, which would still have to be passed at a public meeting in public?
And it all has the same effect at the end of the day, so, you know. One thing to think about, too, is that the budget, we do advertise for the budget. It is part of the budget discussions. It is a line item in the budget, so so it is getting out there, although that is a lot of detail, right? But.
The zoning that was just advertised, a legal ad was seventeen hundred dollars.
But that was two times.
It was seventeen hundred dollars.
And it was the full ad.
How often does this happen?
I mean, legal, it's up to council. Legal costs are rising and advertising costs are expensive. It's just, it is what it is at the end of the day. It's probably six hundred bucks, eight hundred dollars.
I was gonna say, it's probably six hundred bucks, but maybe even less if if the summer is short.
I would say, since we have to present the budget to the public every year, that we highlight that particular item maybe at the presentation of the budget to the public, so that it's out there and it's on record.
Right, but what would you want to do with this? You would leave it as a resolution, then, if you're going to do that and highlighting it elsewhere.
Yeah, that's what I would do. I mean, it's not like we're trying to hide it, but we can highlight it on the presentation of the annual budget.
Versus spending six or eight hundred dollars or whatever.
The only thing I would say is none of us is going to live forever. So the decision that we make, you know, on this will affect future boards. And they may not do that, or they might, you know, to his point that to tell the public so it doesn't look like you're slipping something past them. And it's not you guys. You're not benefited by this.
Right.
You know, it's only your employees, but it's still the taxpayers' money.
But we've always advertised in the past, right?
Right, we have always advertised it in the past.
Right.
I think the last time that the ordinance was, was two thousand nine, just giving you a reference of the last time that you had to do it. The last ordinance was two thousand nine. That was in there. That we had found, which was employees at three percent and the manager at five percent. I know the past manager was at six percent, so I'm not sure.
Twenty ten is the one I have in here, but this pension ordinance originally was two thousand and one. I guess it's probably switched to two thousand and five.
Ten years that you've been doing it, so six hundred dollars over ten years that, yeah, I'm just putting that in reference out there of how long you do that. It's really about that we just, and in the last union contract, we just moved from three percent to four percent. And so that, and it was three percent prior to that, so it didn't, has not changed significantly. It's not like it changes every other year or those type of things. It very well could, depending on contract negotiations or employment agreements, it certainly could, but historically it has not, just to throw that out there, so. Sometimes we just put in for resolution because it does make it easier, but at the end of the day, you know, like electric rates, now it's by resolution, or the sewers now by resolution, because it's just easier.
Right.
Yeah. And saves.
You don't have to wait for the advertising, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
And those things actually have a bigger impact on the public than, you know, because now we're affecting their rates there, you know, so. Just something to think about. I mean, I'm I'm okay with whatever we decide. I don't really have an opinion on it, so I'm good either way, so.
Take it the way it is. We advertise it going through, or leave, you know.
Leave it as it is. All right, ordinance.
All right. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I would say just.
Okay, we'll just leave it as it is.
So I want to take out the language about resolutions.
Okay, I was trying to find where it actually. Yeah, I would just take that whole thing out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just change the numbers. Dave, is there somewhere, is there somewhere we could put something in there about highlighting that information during the budget process?
I think the minutes should reflect that.
Yeah, so with the public.
Right.
People could find out that.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
If they have a question, yeah.
Great. I just need to know what to advertise. So now I think I know. We take that part out. We'll leave it the way it is, which is ordinance.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I had one other question. You said this is retroactive?
To January first.
So the change was already made?
In the budget. That's why they asked me, is it in the budget?
Correct, yes. It was passed in the budget that Borough Council voted on to start January first. And my employment agreement starting January first was a seven percent contribution.
Okay.
The reason this came up on their radar was for their audit. So the pension providers also get an audit, just like we get an audit, and this came up, and they're like, hey, we noticed that you're going, you're at four percent and seven percent. Can you just enact this ordinance so it updates it for our auditor? And we're like, yeah, sure. We didn't know. Yeah. So that's, that's why in here it says as of January first, because it was in the Borough budget for them. Yeah.
Okay, well, that'll be on for later tonight to tell me to advertise it.
Yeah, yeah.
With the change.
With the change, right, exactly right.
All right. If there are any other questions, we'll go to item six, old business. Item A, Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven, recognizing National Police Week.
So this resolution recognizes National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Police Week is May fifteenth through the twenty first. This is an annual resolution that we do, and it's on for consideration as an action item.
Any questions? If there are none, item B, Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight, recognizing National EMS Week.
National EMS, National EMS Week is May nineteenth through May twenty fifth for twenty twenty four. This is also an annual resolution that we've been doing, and we provide a copy to a V M S C, who is very appreciative, and it's on for consideration as an action item this evening.
How long have we been doing the EMS?
I think this is only the second year.
I don't remember a whole lot.
I remember we did, I think, maybe we started in twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And then twenty twenty-three, I'll have to look back, but I know it's just been since Chief Wheeler was there, because other, maybe the North Penn managers had talked about getting together, and all the boards said they would love to honor them, so we all decided to move forward, but it has not been.
Right, I thought it was recent, so, yeah, okay.
That's nineteen seventy-four.
Yeah, now, now, maybe, maybe twenty twenty-two.
All right, any questions? If there are none, we'll go to item C, Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh nine, recognizing Public Works Week.
This resolution recognizes Public Works Week, which is May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth for twenty twenty-four, is on for consideration as an action item. I know that Public Works is very appreciative. When, you know, council and mayor honor them, and I also think this is fairly new, maybe, maybe five years that we've been doing that, which I think is just a great accomplishment for them. They do a great job. It's on for consideration as an action item this evening.
Questions? If none, we'll go to item D, Resolution twenty twenty four dash ten, recognizing George Didden Greenhouse, Greenhouses Hundred and Tenth Anniversary.
There's a resolution and a mayoral proclamation in your packets honoring Didden Greenhouses Hundred and Tenth Anniversary, which is going to be celebrated on June twenty-second from twelve to six P M. At Didden's Greenhouses on the corner of Butler and West Vine. It's on for consideration as an action item this evening, and also asking if any members of council or the mayor are going and want to present something to them, I can schedule that, so just let, just let me know. If you'll be in attendance, and I can schedule something. June twenty-second. Okay, great.
Madam Mayor, you'll present?
Yeah. Do that, sure.
Okay.
I'll be available.
Okay.
I'll work with Josh at Didden's and and make sure that's part of the event day and let you guys know the timing on that.
So one of them could present the council resolution, the other's the mayor.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. We'll let the husband-wife tag team this one.
It is a family business.
All right. Any questions? If not, we'll go to item E, Resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven, recognizing the Trolley Stop Deli's, Deli's sixtieth anniversary.
This resolution recognizes the Trolley Stop Deli's sixtieth anniversary. It's a resolution and a proclamation. They will be celebrating their sixtieth anniversary on June first from eleven A M. To two P M. At the Trolley Stop. If any member of council or the mayor are planning to attend, let me know, and I will certainly work that out with Melissa for a presentation as well.
We can do that one.
Okay.
But let me just say this. It references their special sandwich, the Weber. I went there last week and had a Weber. Very good.
Good. That's what they're known for.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so I would, sorry, Rich.
I I have a question on this. Wouldn't it also a good idea, we have Founder's Day coming up, to do something special, a special announcement at the Founder's Day event?
For both Didden's.
I think that's a great idea.
The other thing some townships do is have them come in. Like, if you can't get to the Trolley Stop, you could have them come to a meeting, give it to them here.
Yeah, I figured since we're going to have a lot of people there, Founder's Day, that
Right, that's another good one.
Thing that have somebody.
Maybe you could present it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was the June first time?
Eleven A M. To two P M.
Okay.
Didden's is all day? Was it twenty-second?
Yeah, twelve to six.
I can attend the June first at the Trolley Stop.
Larry, did you say you're going to go too?
Okay.
I want to just make sure I communicate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go to item F, Resolution twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty four dash twelve, closer, closure of certain Borough roads.
This resolution authorizes the closure of Cherry Street and Union Street for the Borough Founder's Day event, which is going to be held on June fifteenth from twelve P M. To four P M. The road closure will be from ten A M. To six P M. It's on for consideration as an action of the season.
Any questions? If not, we'll go to item seven, the action items, where the fun begins. If there are no questions, we'll start with item A, motion to consider Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven, recognizing National Police Week. I got a motion from Councilwoman Cresser, a second from Councilwoman Gerard. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item B, motion to consider Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight, recognizing National EMS Week.
Simo.
Second.
Got a motion. Sorry, my watch is speaking. I got a motion from Councilwoman Cresser, a second from Councilwoman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item C, motion to consider Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh nine, recognizing Public Works Week.
Simo.
Thank you.
Got a motion from Councilman Cress, or Councilman Fagan, a second from Councilwoman Cresser. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Item D, motion to consider Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh ten, recognizing George Didden Greenhouses Hundred and Tenth Anniversary.
Motion. Second.
I got a motion from Councilwoman Burns, a second from Councilwoman Gerard. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item E, motion to consider Resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven, recognizing the Trolley Stops Del, Trolley, Trolley Stop Deli's sixtieth anniversary.
Thank you.
I got a motion from Councilwoman Burns, a second from Councilwoman Cresser. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Item F, motion to consider Resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve, authorizing the closure of certain Borough roads for the Hatfield Borough Founder's Day event.
Second.
I got a motion from Councilwoman Cresser, a second from Councilman Fagan. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Item G, mostly consider advertising the ordinance number five five three, amending Hatfield Borough's ordinance relating to the Borough's defined contribution plan to revise the Borough, the Borough's contribution for a public hearing to be held on June nineteenth, twenty twenty four, at seven P M., removing the section for making, changing the ordinance to a resolution. Can I get a motion?
Simo. Second.
And a motion from Councilman Fagan, a second from Councilwoman Burns. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. All right, item eight, can I get a motion to approve the bills?
I have a question about something.
Okay.
Um, Armor and Sons, the four hundred and fifty-five-dollar charge firehouse flashing here. Is that the new flashing that we just put in the?
Correct, yeah.
They already needed the.
Yeah, they, there was, and the the control button inside was broken. It wasn't under warranty anymore, but, um, so we have the, it's under Hatfield Borough, but Hatfield Borough and Hatfield Township split the invoices. So same with the annual repair. It just comes to Hatfield Borough, and then we bill Hatfield Township. So we kind of have like an agreement of how we'll split it, so, because it benefits both communities, but, yeah, there was something with the control button inside that when they would push it, it wasn't flashing outside. Yeah.
And the whole purpose is.
It's hard to believe that's already been up for over a year, so.
Yeah.
No, it's a good question, good question.
Is that a postage, like, three thousand? Is that standard? Is that every month, the same amount?
No, it lasts months, so.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, 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 no, I think our.
Stuck out for some reason.
Yeah, our.
The Pitney Bowls.
Yeah, we just load it whenever we need it, so she normally puts an average of around four thousand on if she needs, and it might be twice a year. I think our postage is, budget is roughly a little over nine thousand dollars. So, and she did upload it because we had the community survey once that went out, the thing, so it was like, okay.
Yep.
And the electric bills shut off notices, so a lot was going out this past month.
Aren't we going to a paperless society?
When people sign up for e-billing.
Hint, hint, everyone watching, sign up for e-billing, please, and so you'll save us all some money. This was your friendly public, no, just kidding. Um, okay. Uh, any more questions on the bills? All right, I believe we're at the stage of getting a motion. Can I get a motion to approve the bills?
Second.
I got a motion from Councilman Gerard, a second from Councilman Burns. Any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? There are none. Motion passes. Um, Madam Manager, are we gonna have an executive session?
Uh, yes, we are to discuss uh, I'll call litigation and real estate.
All right. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn for executive session?
So move.
I got a motion from Councilman Presser, a second from Councilman Gerard. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? There are none, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.